We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under our indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. We will start with the resolution of appreciation to outgoing school board member Todd Tolke and former board member and now school district employee Doug Morrison.
Thank you. Well, it's my highest honor to be able to read this resolution for Mr. Tolke when I was the school board president when he started and nine years later, who would have thought? But so I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas Todd Tolke has served the Sioux Falls School District 49-5 for the past nine years since July 2012 as a valued school board member, its vice president and president, and whereas Mr. Tolke has during these nine years ably served as board representative to the following committees: Affordable Housing Board, Budget Review Committee, PATH Committee, District Insurance Committee, Citywide PTA, Community Development Committee, Policy Review Committee, Sioux Falls Sports Authority, Safe and Secure Schools Council, Teacher of the Year Committee, Chamber of Commerce, as well as a contributing member of the city counties and schools meetings legislative liaison and on the negotiating team for the school board, and whereas Todd provided outstanding leadership for Sioux Falls and the whole state of South Dakota through his tenure as a president of the Associated School Boards of South Dakota, and whereas Todd provided leadership and significant guidance to the district's long-range financial planning, five-year budget plan, and was instrumental in passing historic $190 million capital improvement bond while maintaining a high sense of fiscal responsibility and advocating strong innovative academic programs, and whereas Todd during his tenure was instrumental and provided significant leadership during two superintendent transitions that included national searches, interviews, and the ultimate hiring of best-in-class leaders, and whereas during his tenure on the school board, the school district moved forward with the construction of George McGovern Middle School, Susan B. Anthony Elementary School, Sonia Sotomayor Elementary School, the new field house at Howard Woodfield, the new hub building on the campus of Southeast Tech, as well as completing construction of Thomas Jefferson High School and Ben Rifele Middle School for their opening in the fall of 2021, and whereas Todd encouraged a commitment to understanding and valuing diversity as well as the importance of providing multiple pathways for student success while advocating for children with special needs, and whereas Todd's commitment to excellence in education has enhanced opportunities for countless children and his commitment to increasing involvement of citizens in the decision-making process regardless of education or regarding education programs has continued contributed to the overall improvement of the district's instructional program, and whereas Todd has ably served in these capacities at considerable personal sacrifice and with outstanding dedication to placing children first in all his decisions, whether considering budgets, boundaries, busing, calendars, curriculum, or policies, and whereas we, the school board, wish to express deep appreciation and thanks to Todd Tolke on behalf of the members of the school board, the administration, and the entire school district. Now therefore let it be resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting of the school board of the Sioux Falls School District 49-5 held Monday, July 12, 2021, and a copy of this resolution be given to Todd Tolke. Whereas upon this motion was made by...
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
And after the motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. It carries.
I think there's a couple things for you up here, Todd, if you want to come up here. So that's the standard plaque. And then also, since you were instrumental in starting up Jefferson High School that will open up this fall, and their inaugural football team will take the field, we have been issued the first official helmet.
Oh, I love it.
All right, I was doing really good until then. Well, thank you. It's been an honor. It's a humbling position to be in, and hopefully over the last nine years, we've made a difference in several children's lives, and that's what we're here for is to make a difference in the kids. Love you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. I would also like to recognize Jackie, Emma, and Paige, Todd's wife and two daughters, for their sacrifice as well, because as we all know, if you serve in public service, your family's right there along with you through thick and thin. So thank you for your allowing Todd to serve in this capacity to the Sioux Falls School District.
Okay, we'll move on to issuing the oath of the two newly elected members. Kate Parker had to be out of town for work, so she is not here, so she will be sworn in at the next board meeting, but Mark Murren.
Mark Murren, at a regular meeting the school board held on Monday, May 24, 2021, the school board declared you were a duly elected member of the school board of Sioux Falls School District 49-5. Section 13814 of the South Dakota law provides that newly elected members of the school board shall qualify and assume their office at the annual meeting of the school board in July by taking and subscribing to an oath or affirmation to support the laws and constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota, and to faithfully perform the duties of school board membership. At this time, as business manager of the district, it is my pleasant duty to administer this oath. So would you please raise your right hand and read the oath?
I, Mark Murren, having been elected to the office of the school board of Sioux Falls School District 49-5, Minnehaha County and Lincoln County, South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the laws and the constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota, and I will faithfully, impartially perform the duties of school board membership.
I have a couple of...I need you to subscribe to the oath. I have two copies, one for you and one for us to put out in files. No, just sign. Go ahead and sign. One more. That's for you, that one. All right, welcome to the school board, sir.
We'll move on to some quick business before we do the organization of the school board. Item 5A and B, approval of June payroll and claims to vendors, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. Onto supplemental consent agenda, items 6A, 1 and 2. Do I have a motion to approve the claim to Sanford Healthcare Systems?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. Three with one abstention from board member Ryder. Onto organization of the school board, the business manager.
We will now entertain nominations for the office of president of the school board.
I would like to nominate Cynthia Mickelson.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Mark Murren. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. V. Onto the vice president of the school board. I will now entertain nominations for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Kate Parker, second.
Any other...I have a motion and a second for Kate Parker. Any other nominations for vice president? Seeing none, we'll have a voice vote on vice president. All those in favor of Kate Parker for vice president signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Seeing none, Kate Parker will be our vice president. Onto authorization of membership to Associated School Boards of South Dakota and the naming of delegates. Do I have a motion to approve our authorization of membership into the ASBSD?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor of our membership in ASBSD signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. Onto the naming of delegates. Do I have a motion for a delegate?
I would like to nominate Nan Baker.
I would second that. Any other nominations? Seeing none. All those in favor of Nan Baker for the delegate to ASBSD signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. Onto approval of the minutes of the meetings held June 28.
So moved, second.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. Didn't look like we had anyone addressing the board to sign up. Thank you very much. Onto approval of the agenda. Item 10. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. Now, the good news report, and Dr. Staveen, I believe is...
Yes, and while Dr. Nold makes his way up, he's going to show a video for us tonight. Deanne Conrad is unable to be with us, but she has put together a short video which is kind of a preview of our 150th year celebration featuring some of the historical buildings of our district. So if you want to start the video?
Good evening. We're taking the good news report on the road tonight. Well, actually, not really on the road. We're just going to take you down the street a bit. We're going to go to the heart of Sioux Falls. Imagine if you will that it's 1871, 150 years ago. In 1871, the Civil War had just ended, and there was really no longer a need for Fort Dakota, which had been built along the Big Sioux River. There was, however, a need to educate the growing number of students showing up in Sioux Falls. Dr. J.L. Phillips, one of the first pioneers to carve out the dirt streets of Sioux Falls, along with R.F. Pettigrew and others, are responsible for the Sioux Falls we know and love today. As the city grew, it became quite obvious that a school was needed as well. School district number one was established in Minnehaha County on July 3, 1871. The first lessons were taught in Assad House along what is now North Main Avenue. That following year, school was also held in the old military barracks along the Big Sioux River. Construction of the first physical school really didn't come easily. It seems some residents didn't want to pay the penny tax to build a new school, but a judge ruled that it was necessary, and finally the money started to come in. Edwin Sharp's bid of $985 to build a new school, two rooms, was accepted, and that school was completed in 1873. While it was being built, a room was rented at the Methodist Church on the corner of 11th and Main. Another room was rented along this stretch of Main Avenue between 7th and 8th Streets. It was rented in a place called Libby's Hall. Libby's Hall had a butcher shop in the front and classrooms in the back. A booming Sioux Falls brought more students and the need for more space. Central School, also interchangeably known as Irving School, opened in 1878 at 60 square feet with eight classrooms, and it was built on the site of what we know as Washington High School. In the 1880s, T.C. Marson was awarded a contract to build two new schoolhouses, four rooms each, two rooms on each floor. Hawthorne Elementary was considered to be the North School. They named that Hawthorne in 1885. The second of the two schools was referred to as the East School. It's actually now called Whittier Middle School. It's actually now called Whittier Middle School. Records indicate a fourth public school was built on the southeast side of town at 14th Street and 2nd Avenue. That's where I'm standing right now. The name of that school was Longfellow, however, it was changed somewhere along the line to General Beetle School. This is interesting because we know that Longfellow was built south of here in 1920 and is now occupied by Dakotaabilities. Also, farther down the street on 14th, General Beetle School sits on the corner down there at about 6th and 14th, and it is now occupied by TeachWell Solutions. So there you have it, a little early history of the Sioux Falls School District. Thanks for coming along.
Thank you. For those not aware, it is our 150th year, and so we're just bringing in some history. We are doing a fundraiser to plant trees at all of our school buildings, and you can have a plaque with your name on that. It's $150 for a tree. And it's to help also offset the trees that are being removed because of the Emerald Ash Board to help with that. So keep looking at that, and hopefully, we'll have some more history as we go on through the year. Thank you very much. We will now move to conflicts of interest for administrators. Having reviewed those on your portal, do I have a motion to approve those conflicts of interests?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor of approving those conflicts of interest signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those conflicts are approved. On to the consent agenda items 13A through D. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I'll give it to new board member Murin. So a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. On to the reports of the superintendent. We'll first have the public hearing on the application for waivers of the 10.
Good evening. As required by law, a public hearing must be held for school districts to apply for waivers from administrative rules. The Sioux Falls School District is requesting to apply for waivers from South Dakota Administrative Rule 2443-0208, Plan of Intent for Teachers Employed During the 2021 School Year. Nine teachers will be impacted by this waiver request. A plan of intent. Any district employing teachers or administrators who are non-certified or serving outside their current certification shall have on file with the Department of Education a plan of intent stating how the district intends to ensure that all teachers and administrators are serving on a valid certificate in their certified areas. The plans of intent must be fulfilled in one calendar year, and a district may request a one-time, one-year extension for this plan of intent. The approval of the plan of intent requested this evening will allow teachers to have had... allowed teachers to have additional time to complete praxis test requirements in the area of special education, special education in teaching social sciences, journalism, and elementary education within Spanish immersion. In most circumstances, plans of intent and plans of intent waivers are utilized in areas with limited candidate pools or employing candidates who are new to the profession or new to teaching in South Dakota and have additional requirements to meet. The executive summary shows a list of the number of plans of intent that we've had over the years, and it is interesting and also important to note that in the past two years, we've had a spike in plans of intent, and that is due to special education, especially at the high school level, which requires teachers not only to be certified in special ed, but also in the content area in which they're serving. So that does require several plans of intent and praxis tests for these teachers to be fully certified. I stand before the board, asking you to acknowledge the public hearing and authorize administration to proceed with application for waivers from administrative rules. Do you have any questions?
Yes, so, and I just wanted to clarify, so this new ruling from the Department of Ed is what caused the spike, because these teachers were already serving in those roles, and there was a new requirement for them. Is that correct with...
Right, just a couple of years ago, it requires more testing.
And that's due to the spike. Any other questions for Becky? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Any comments or questions regarding the plan of intent filed by the district? And if you do, you just come up to the mic and ask something. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll move on to the motion to acknowledge the public hearing and authorize administration to proceed with the applications for waivers from administrative rules. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. On to the English learners proficiency update.
All right, good evening. In the spirit of new students arriving in our community, I am here this evening to give you an update on the English language proficiency results of our students from testing this spring of 2021. First of all, just a little bit of context for the assessment. There is a World Class Instruction Design and Assessment Consortium in the United States, and that is most commonly known as the WEDA Consortium. While the member states vary from year to year, currently, there are 40 member states or territories or federal agencies that are a member of WEDA. South Dakota has consistently been a member of this consortium for quite some time. Membership in the consortium allows us to meet our federal compliance to measure language proficiency each year of our students who do not test as language proficient when they arrive in our school district. The main function of the WEDA Consortium is to... is for the advancement of language proficiency in students in the United States or the territories or agencies that they serve. The actual assessment is called the Access for ELLs 2.0. That assessment is given annually, as that is a federal requirement. It addresses four language domains. Students are assessed in the areas of reading, speaking, listening, and writing in their English proficiency. In addition to a score in each one of those domains, students are also given a composite score, which is just what it sounds like. It's a composition of all four of those domains, however, they are not equally weighted. So the areas of reading and writing are more heavily weighted than those of listening and speaking. Each year, students take that test, usually in late January to late February. However, this year, there was an extension on that testing window nationwide to accommodate for COVID across the nation. And because of that, we also received our results quite a bit later than normal. Proficiency levels come back to students on a scale of 1 to 6, 1 being very entry level and 6 being the maximum. The state of South Dakota does allow for exit criteria along that scale. In the state of South Dakota, each... First of all, I should say, each state sets their exit criteria at their own state level. That is not common across the nation. The state of South Dakota sets the exit criteria currently as a composite score of 5.0. There used to be subscores that were also required, but those were removed a couple of years ago. Currently, there is a waiver on file with the U.S. Department of Ed, and we are anxiously awaiting the results of that waiver at the state level. That waiver, if approved, would allow us to also exit students who are higher... at a 4.0 or higher as a composite score, and they have to have a 3 or a 4 on their South Dakota ELA assessment. So if they had those two combination... A combination of those two elements, they would also be able to exit the EL program in the state of South Dakota. So while the reports I'm going to give you tonight are on how we did on the WEDA, there is a possibility of additional students exiting the program before school starts if that waiver is approved by the U.S. Department of Ed. In the recent years, also, the proficiency and the results of students on the WEDA assessment is now a 10% segment of each school's school performance index or the school report card each year as well, and that's new in the last, I think it's been three years. So what did Sioux Falls look like this year through an EL lens? There were 2,632 students that were identified as EL within the testing window and participated in the assessment. 2,614 of those took the regular assessment, and 18 took the ALT assessment. It should be noted that students who take the alternative assessment are not allowed to exit the program. So that is... Those students who do take the ALT assessment are identified by their IEP team as needing an alternative assessment, but those students will, as long as they remain in the school district, will remain identified as EL. There were 2,647 students identified as EL on the last day of school. So how did we do on the assessment? Well, as you can imagine, students come in at various times throughout the year, and so they don't always exit, or their proficiency is not always common for their grade level. So we do have a lot of variance, and we really do focus heavily on their growth. So the first few slides I'm going to show you, as far as test results, focus on the growth that students made. If you take a look at this first graph, this shows the growth on students' composite scores. The first bar, it's kind of hard to see up here. It might be a little easier on your screens, hopefully. The first bar in blue shows those students who made no growth. Now, that might mean that they fell backwards a little bit, but it also might mean they stayed exactly where they were from the year before. And the orange bar shows those students that made .1 to .4 growth, and the gray bar shows those students who made .5 or higher growth. And that's always our goal in all four domains and in their composite, is to make at least .5 growth each year. So you can see how we've done over the last three years, and in light of COVID and in everything that we were worried about with students maintaining that language proficiency, we did have quite a few of our students that were EL in virtual academy, and so we were quite concerned about how that would affect things. But I think we did pretty well overall in the composite area as far as maintaining our growth patterns from the years prior, even growing a little bit in a couple of areas. Of course, we want to shrink the blue bar and grow the other two bars. Then we'll look at the four subdomains. This one is reading, and we have implemented a few things over the last couple of years to help grow that reading growth, one of those being SIPs at the elementary that not only helps our students who are English proficient, but also helps our students who are not English proficient grow in their reading abilities as well. Clearly, we still have room to grow, so we will continue to work hard on that. Our writing, you can see we took a little dip in 2020, but we have regained that .5 or higher growth in the gray bar in this last year and maintained our level in the orange area. Looking at speaking, this has been a huge focal area for the last three years, as four years ago, we took quite a dip in our speaking as the assessment was recalibrated across the nation. And so we worked very hard on really focusing on what exactly it is that the assessment measures for students, and really focusing not just on them speaking socially, but them speaking academically and being able to answer academic prompts. So we continue to make growth in that area, and we will continue to have that be a focus of our interim assessments between our annual assessments on the WEDA. And finally, our listening. When you focus on one area, it's always important to make sure you don't lose ground in other areas, and this is definitely one that we want to make sure becomes a new focal point while we continue to focus on the other three. But our students are very good at listening, as that's what a lot of students do a lot of the day in the education setting. But we want to make sure that they're listening with that intent of focusing on academic language and being able to answer those academic questions when they're prompted with information through their listening exercises. So that will be an area we will continue to focus on moving forward. As has been the trend for the last few years, we have continued to grow the number of students who exit the program each year, and this year was no exception. We had 195 students exit our EL program, which left 2,437 students at the end of the year needing still being EL services moving forward if they were to all return to the Sioux Falls School District. So we always have great, great growth, or the greatest amount of our growth in exiting is... Happens at the elementary level, with no exception. This year, it was our fourth and fifth grade students, which is what we hope for. We had an increased number of middle school students who exited this year, and we attribute that to some changes we've made in programming, and we hope to continue to see that number escalate over the next few years as we continue to make some improvements in our middle school programming. So what do those exit students... Exiting students look like and where are they coming from? This graph gives a little bit of a different take on that. You can see in blue, there were 437 first-time test takers. You can also see then where each of those students fall in their cohort year. Just like graduation cohort, when EL students take their initial WEDA assessment, they are plopped into a cohort year based on their initial baseline score, and then they have five, four, or three years to exit the program based on where their initial score is. So this year, we had... Those are the total number of test takers. So we had 437 first-time test takers, and then we had 105 test takers that should have exited last year, but did not, so we're still in the test-taking group this year. And then you can keep reading down the line how many students that were in our test-taking group this year, what year they should exit the program. Then the second line down on this chart shows you the total number of students that did exit this year in 2021 and what cohort they exited from. So as you can see, there were 19 students who exited this year, and it was their first time taking the assessment. There were 22 students who exited this year that should have exited last year, but we were able to get them to exit this year, and then you can continue to read across the chart and see where the... What cohort group those came from. As far as seniors this year, who are leaving us not necessarily because of exiting, but are leaving because they graduated from the Sioux Falls School District, you can also see what cohort groups those came from, and that kind of plays into the next graph a little bit, because we do not have a... The numbers don't always carry consistently from chart to chart in this report, because we have students who exit, but we also have students who graduate. And some overlap, and they exit and graduate, but some do not. So that plays into this next graph that you'll look at. This next graph shows what WEDA level the students that will be returning to us in the fall, where... What... Sorry, composite level they will be coming back to us in based on their WEDA results. This graph does not include the 32 students who are enrolled but have not yet taken their initial WEDA, which means they enrolled in our school district after the WEDA assessment window. It does not include the graduating seniors or the 18 students who took the ALT assessment. But as you can see, the majority of our students fall in that 3 range, which is also where most students live the longest on their journey from entrance to exiting. They sort of plateau a little bit in that developing range, and then we really push hard to get them through that 4 level into that exit status. So what does that mean for us? When reflecting on the data, we always look forward to what's to come and what changes we can make to continue to make improvements. So some of the areas that we will be focusing on in the 21-22 school year are moving our programming around a little bit at the middle school level so that our sheltered core courses are taught by teachers each day who also teach non-sheltered courses. So if I'm a science teacher, I will teach three sections of regular science, and I might teach one section of our EL students. That helps our teachers maintain that level of rigor as they're working with non-EL students and carry over that level of academic rigor to our EL students each day as well. So we're hoping to see good results from that and continued growth in the middle school area. We are adding three new EL sites to continue to help our students attend school in their home attendance area. So Ben Rifle and Edison Middle School will be EL sites for the middle school, adding those two, and Jefferson High School will also be an EL site moving forward as well. And then, combined with efforts at the state level, we will continue to increase the interim assessments that we give to students, hoping to give us more data points from just one year, you know, from that WEDA assessment, one year to one year. We want to continue to have additional data points along the way where we can continue to measure their growth in those four domain areas throughout the year and pinpoint the areas where we can help them make improvement before they take the WEDA each year. So we will give the WEDA model in conjunction with the state as they're adopting that at the state level. That is an interim assessment produced by WEDA that the state is going to purchase and pay for. And then we also use a company called Finish Line, and it really helps our students get an idea of what those assessments look like each year. So we want to reduce their anxiety when it comes to test time by having them be very familiar with the testing prompts and being very familiar with procedures that they go through. We want them to practice with the microphones. We want them to practice the same question formats so that when they do get to that WEDA assessment, they really can give it their best effort. their best efforts and have their scores be reflective of what their abilities are. So those are areas we will continue to work on. As I pass the baton over to Sarah Clausen, as she takes over as EL coordinator. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Well, that was one thing I was going to add to, what additional things we're helping is that new position is, you know, if you look at the numbers, that's over 10% of our population is in the EL category, so it's important to have coordinated efforts through K through 12 that we can hopefully still keep moving the needle forward in helping these students succeed. And I think an important stat, too, that people don't, might not know in our district is that it's not like we just have one other or two other languages that we have. At times, I think we have as many as 92 dialects in our school district. So it's not that easy that you're just speak, you know, teaching to Spanish speakers or to other speakers. It's many dialects and languages that the teachers are having to coordinate when they're teaching in their classroom, so.
And communicating with families in all of those languages and using the resources that we have. You are correct. It allows for a great amount of cultural wealth and cultural diversity, but it also comes with the challenges, too.
Extreme challenges. So thank you for your team and so forth in doing this, and I like to focus on the thing that we have less people in the program this year going into next year, so we're obviously moving the needle in the right direction and hoping to help these students succeed in, in their school career.
I'm just curious, as we look at the numbers where we have the no growth, and then we have less than what we would want to have for growth, it's, it seems to be quite large. And have we looked at, from a, even a building perspective, are there some buildings that, not to point out teachers or anything like that, but maybe there are, you know, groups of teachers or cohorts that have really figured something out that we could go and look at what they're doing and try to help teachers in another building or another grade level or something like that? So just curious, how can we really utilize the experts that we might have in some of our buildings to really help? When you talk about the number of buildings that this program is spread across, sometimes I'm sure they feel like they're maybe on an island, and how can we, or how are we getting those resources together?
That's a great question. We really have focused that strategy at the elementary level over the last three years as we have written a companion curriculum with a collaborative classroom, and we do a lot of pre-teaching. So we have really focused on the areas where we have had great success and tried to ask those teachers a lot of questions. We've tried to do a lot of shadowing and replicating what they're doing and have them do some presentations when we do that collaboration with our entire staff. And one of the things that all of the teachers at the elementary reported back this year was that with the elementary frameworks that they have used this last year in order to make sure that all students were in the same place with curriculum throughout the year, it really has helped the EL teachers focus on having their pre-teaching be right in line with what's coming up the next week in the classroom. So we really are trying to do that and learn from the experts and learn from the areas of success, just like we do with all curriculum in our district, and that's the whole point of collaboration, is to really try to learn from those that are having success with things and try to replicate those things. And we will continue. That's one of the reasons that we have changed the model at the middle school, is because we were starting to see greater success at the high school than we were at the middle school with students making growth and exiting. So we went ahead and emulated that model at the middle school and hope to see those continued results there as well. As you know, there are many factors that play into this in addition to their language barrier, so we do see our title schools sometimes struggle a little bit more than our non-title schools, and those are just because of factors that affect the education of all students and not just those students with a language barrier. So it just adds one more factor to this, to the, you know, the learning barriers that students face.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, as we're talking about different delivery models for the English learners. What annual assessment do the dual immersion students fall under?
If they are EL and they're in the dual immersion program, they will take this WEDA assessment. So anyone who is on the EL side of the dual immersion program must, they're identified as EL, so they will, they have to take this WEDA assessment each year. And then the English-speaking side of that, and I'm going to look to my left just a little bit here, they participate in the stamp assessment. Dr. Boyson, can you tell me what grade level?
So they take the stamp assessment at three, five, and then eight.
Eight, okay. I just wanted to make sure that was the same with our Spanish immersion as it was with our dual immersion. So our dual immersion students have not, obviously, since we don't have anybody in third grade, yet that will be a feature or an opportunity coming for them when they reach that level.
It'll be interesting to see those data sets as they come forward and, and how that, the form of a delivery of education, that model, framework works.
Obviously, that measures their language proficiency both on, on both sides. However, as you know, those students all participate in the MAP assessment, they participate in the South Dakota assessment, so they're academics, we get from those assessments just like we do with all students, but really focusing on their language growth. Those are our opportunities to measure their growth there.
Thank you.
Absolutely. The great thing this year is now that we're hopefully allowing more people in the buildings and families coming in and so forth, that parents, guardians, any family members of our students with EL, even though they're, they might also have the language barrier, maybe just getting them involved and in the building and seeing what's going on and learning, just even to show them what mechanisms they have to use the EL program would be great, because we know with repetition at home and so forth will come more success for students.
As always, a huge props to our school home liaisons who, parent, community, you know, parent-school connection is their number one priority, and we are fortunate this next year to get to grow our school home liaison staff by one member, as the United Way has come through with some additional funding to help us grow that program a little bit as well. So anytime we can increase the liaisons, that just helps us, because you are correct, if we can get the parents in there and really focus on that parent connection piece, it does help students. Any other questions, Demi?
Seeing none, do you have a motion to acknowledge the EL proficiency update?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
That's good.
Thank you so much. Onto adoption in the FY22 budget and certification of levies to county auditors. This is manager.
The school will begin its budget process in November 2020, at which time the board adopted guidelines and a timeline for the budget process. Between December and February, 19 subcommittees comprised of administration, professional and classified staff, and community members develop program budgets, which were then presented to the Budget Review Committee. The Budget Review Committee included two board members and representation from the subcommittees. In March, the committee reviewed and commented on the budget. A board work session was held March 31st, 2021, and April 7th, 2021, to hold public work sessions, and the board could review the budget. The board held a public hearing and approved the tentative budget at its April 12th meeting. Tonight, we will finalize that budget. Since the tentative approval of the budget to maintain competitive salaries in the targeted areas that had fallen behind the board further raised employee salaries as follows. Increase starting teacher salaries from $37,735 to $41,000. That's an 8.7% increase. Increase speech learning pathologist salaries by 34.8% for first-year SLPs and 18.81% for those at the top of the schedule. Increased education assistant hourly pay by 12.2%. To accommodate these increases, the general fund budget increased by $1.2 million, and the special education budget increased by $1.6 million. Overall, the tax-supported budget is about $280 million. The school levy is projected to decrease by 12 cents in 2022. The average school property tax increase over the last 22 years for Tippel House in Sioux Falls School District is approximately 1.7%. So administrative recommendation to the school board is to adopt the FY2022 school district budget and certify the levies to the county auditors.
Thank you. Any questions for business manager? I just would like to point out, I'm so happy to see these increases, especially for our starting salaries for our new teachers, so that we can remain competitive in the surrounding community, and also with our speech pathologists and EA. We know that right now hiring in Sioux Falls as well as the state is hard, hard, because we have such a low unemployment rate, so that we need to stay competitive, so we can remain having the best quality staff in our district. So thank you for, all of us working hard to get this figured out and to go forward with this.
I'd just like to add, in addition to the salary increases and keeping ourselves competitive, just given the growth that we have in the district, really the use of our taxpayer dollars and accommodating that growth, we've been prudent and really have leaned on some experts in the community and some of the financial advice that we're, we've been given, and just grateful for those that rallied behind that.
Yep, and we'll continue to do that, and I think we're 11th lowest out of the 12 school districts in the Minnehaha Lincoln County area, so we're very prudent with our taxpayers' money, because as we all know, that's very important to make sure we are being prudent with that, so.
We have a good balance.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do you have a motion to adopt FY2022 school district budget and certify the levies to the county auditors?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That carries. For the good of, this isn't on the agenda, but the ribbon cutting for the Jefferson is August 10th at 11:30 a.m., and August 12th for Ben Rifle at 4:30 p.m. So if people want to come out and join us for that celebration, very excited. School starts August 26th, it's going to be here before we know it, so staff will start, those that are on 10 and 11-month contracts will start reporting back to the buildings. So looking forward to the school year, everybody being back in the building, so thank you very much. Anything else for the good of the board? Seeing none, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.